Senate will come to order. Reports from standing committees.
November first, two thousand and twenty one. Mr. President, your committee number two appropriations to whom was referred House Bill one thousand and two engrossed federal COVID vaccine mandates, prohibition and remedies to respectfully report saying back to the Senate with the recommendation that it do pass amended voting I, Senators Giroux, Hicks, Kinskey, Perkins and Steinmetz. Signed, Drew Perkins, Chairman.
Consideration bills on general file, Mr. Majority Floor Leader. We're at that order of business. Consideration on bills on general file.
Mr. President, I move the Senate resolve itself into committee of the whole.
For the motion, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed nay.
No.
Committee of the whole please come to order. The first bill for our consideration is House Bill one thousand and two federal COVID vaccine mandates prohibition and remedies. What? The reading clerk will read the bill.
House Bill one zero zero two federal COVID vaccine mandates prohibition and remedies to an acro relating to the protection of individual rights sponsored by Representative Summers. It was referred to committee number two who returned a recommendation that it do pass amended. Voting ayes were Senators Giroux, Hicks, Kinskey, Perkins and Steinmetz.
You've heard the reading of the bill. What is your pleasure, Chairman Perkins? In one minute. Oh, one minute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the committee of the whole rise and report to do so with the due pass recommendation on House Bill one thousand and two. And for an explanation, there is also a standing committee amendment if we can have that read in, please.
Will the reading clerk read the amendment?
House Bill one zero zero two, standing committee amendment number one, two engrossed copy, page one, line four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would also move standing committee amendment number one, the House Bill one thousand and two, and ask for the body's favorable consideration on the amendment as well. Mr. Chairman, we've got this bill. There's another bill coming that's in the works that we haven't got yet. So work on that when we get to it. For an explanation of this bill, in just a moment, I'm going to ask you call on the good Vice President, nationalization of the bill and the amendment, just as a, just by words, just by way of introduction, Mr. Chairman, I would apologize for taking so long in our committee, but quite frankly, we had over fifty, we probably had between forty and fifty people testify. These two bills, on both the bills, and these bills are very important to a lot of people. For some people, they're important that they pass, and for some people, they're important that they not pass. And so the committee, we did our best, we did the best that we could with the time we had allotted. I would not, I don't think anybody in our committee would say that the bill is in perfect order yet, but it is what it is. We have what we have and to, you know, it's unfortunate that we're kind of caught in the, at the end of the day, it's a little bit like the folks are on a certain program that comes live from New York on Saturday night, and that is we go on, not because we're ready, because it is time. And so, Mr. Chairman, without further ado, it is time to take up consideration of House Bill one thousand and two.
We forego Mr. Vice President, Senator Hicks.
Mr. President, or Mr. Chairman, I'm going to walk you through the bill first and tell you what the bill does, and then come back and work the amendment into the bill as we go. So, as handed to us by our colleagues down the other end of the building, is really the bill has three components in here. So, you go through a series of legislative findings on page, starting on page two, three, four, five, and six. And six is where we start getting into, after we get through the legislative findings, you start getting into the balance of page six is definitions. But when we start getting into the definitions, one that has substantive component in here is we've modified the current definition on page seven, at the top of the page, if you go to Romanet three. So, public entity means is defined in WS sixteen six one oh one, et cetera, et cetera. But then we also exempt out certain entities. It says exempt that public entities does not include in any receiving federal funds that may comply with subsection B of this section. So that's a substantive portion of the bill as we provide an exemption if they receive federal funds. Now, because we've exempted amount of subsection B that you'll find on page seven, line eight, be no public entity shall enforce any mandate or standard of the federal government, whether emergency, temporary or permit that requires an employer to ensure a mandate that an employee shall receive as a COVID nineteen vaccination. So keep a nine, this is not private employers. This is only public entities under subsection B. Subsection B, C then comes in and provides some effects as far as court dates as otherwise provided in this section, to the extent that this section conflicts with federal laws, rules, regulations or orders, subsection B of this section shall not be enforced after the federal law regulation, rule or order takes legal effect that requires Wyoming employers to comply with the federal COVID nineteen vaccine. So in effect, what this says is if Wyoming, if the federal courts strike down, whether it be a rule, standard or regulation is illegal, unconstitutional, then this law has full force and effect until that time. So subsection D now says notwithstanding subsection C of this section, this brings in another modifier to that component. And what it does is it modifies B again. It says subsection of this be shall be enforceable during a time period when there's a federal stay by a federal court. So this law regulates or controls if there is a stay put in by a federal judge in implementing any law, rule, regulation, order or standard. Subsection E brings in another component and a different concept. We're on page eight now. But what this does in subsection E brings in the concept of a public entity shall require, shall not require a person, shall require a person to receive or show proof of a COVID nineteen vaccination for the person to receive or qualify for any public benefit. Basically, this is common terminology is a can't require a vaccine passport. Mr. President, section three, direct and consent of the governor. The Attorney General may initiate, participate in litigation. Subsection four provides an appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that purpose. Any unexpended firm funds after June thirtieth, twenty thirty revert, and then of effective a date of immediately. So that's the bill as it came over here and what it does. So, Mr. Chairman, what I want to do right now is walk you through the amendments. And I'm going to kind of characterize these amendments as cleanups and then some that are substantive to the bill that we just described. So we go into page one, line one, says providing limitations on requiring COVID vaccinations. That goes into the title. We'll get to that when we get into that section. And then on page one, line six, it also brings in citizens, insert the state of Wyoming. So this now no longer applies just to citizens, but it applies to the state. When we get to that amendment, I'll point that out to you. Mr. President or Mr. Chairman, on page two, line nine is what I would call a cleanup. And all this is clarify that the development authorization and approval under both the forty-fifth and forty-sixth President of the United States. If we go to page three, line ten, it says delete in the upcoming days. Again, that's just more of a clerical cleanup. That statement is a prognostication, not necessarily something that we would want to put in a statute. If we continue on and go over to the next one, page three, line eleven, again, that's the same one that we cleaned that language up, page four, line ten. This is a cleanup where we change entities and insert employers to be consistent with what we're talking about within the bill. And then when we get down to the next one on page five, line three, this is again what I would characterize as a cleanup. This just brings in the exact language in the Constitution. So there's no confusion there. Similarly, on page five, line four, that brings that language right out of the Constitution into the legislative findings. We see the same thing on page five, line seven. This is a cleanup. You get down to lines eight through ten. We bring in the actual language out of the Constitution, a cleanup. So, Mr. Chairman, those are pretty much the cleanup amendments as we go through this. When we turn over to page seven, and you get to line three, this is what I would call a substantive amendment to the House bill as it came over. What it does is it goes into, and it strikes everything after the period, well, we insert a period after, on line three, after Romanet three. So what it does is it strikes all the language it says except that public entity does not include in any receiving federal funds by what, that by complying with subsection B of this section would lose their federal funding. So we pull that designation out. That's now gone. Mr. Chairman, now we are down to page seven, line four through six. That is a continuation of that deletion. So now we're down to page seven, line fourteen. You delete two at the end of that line. This is the substantive amendment because it kind of changes the character of the bill. And so what it will now read is, is we deleted everything in fifteen through twenty. So now when it comes in and it says, B of this subsection shall not be enforced until the date of final disposition or resolution, including during the penalty of any appeal or any period between entry of a judgment or judgment or mandate and appeal of the judgment or mandate of all federal litigation concerning federal vaccinating mandate status. So that kind of, before we had where the state statute was enforceable during that period, now it's not enforceable. So that if we go on to page eight, lines one through two, again, this is consistent with the language that we just brought in above that, that we delete all that language about during a federal stay, that this law's enforceable, that's gone. And that's consistent with the amendment, page eight, line three, also gets in when all laws conflicting with federal laws, rules and regulations and orders, they're no longer enforceable under this new provision that we brought in. So, page eight, line seven through eleven, this is subsection E is deleted entirely. This brings in the component that talks about a public entity. This is the passport provision. That is deleted. Go on down to page eight. Now we're on line eighteen. We're going to insert an entire new section. This is a substantive component of the bill. We changed that in the title to include this now, and this is litigation under this section may include initiating an action by the name of the state. So now the state can initiate as a violation of the temp or other protections reserved to the states under this act. The substantive component of this is Romanet number two, where it says initiating a claim of action lawsuit on behalf of the state may lead to other plaintiffs that may allow Wyoming citizens to join in the lawsuit as members of the affected class. So what this effectively does is, is if we sue the federal government, we now would allow business entities or individuals to join in that lawsuit with the state of Wyoming. Mr. Chairman, the next substantive amendment you'll find on page eight, line twenty, we deleted the appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and inserted ten million dollars. And with that, Mr. Chairman, if there is no questions, I'd ask for favorable consideration of adoption of standing committee amendment number one to House Bill one zero zero two.
Questions or discussion on the amendments, members? No discussion? Question on the amendment? All those in favor of Senator Perkins, I believe moved it. Yes. Senator Perkins, the motion to adopt the standing committee, standing committee amendment one to House Bill one thousand and two, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Say no. That bill has passed, or that amendment has passed consideration. We'll move on to the bill. Discussion on the bill. Are you ready for the question? Okay. All those in favor of Senator Perkins? Oh, Senator Perkins. He wants to be ranked. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Senator Perkins.
So your committee spent quite a bit of time on this. Certainly it's not in the wheelhouse of the Senate Appropriations Committee, but I don't know it's in anybody's wheelhouse on any committee in here because it touches a lot of, a lot of, a lot of points. Mr. Chairman, so we spent a couple hours last night. We took, as I said, we, we took a lot of testimony this morning. We took testimony until noon. And we limited testimony to six minutes or less of people, and we allowed people to exceed their minutes to, to other people so that other people could make more points. We had, we had many people in the room. We had, I think, eight people testify online that were admitted online. And, you know, what's clear is what we already all know is that there's no perfect solution to the problem and which we find ourselves, and the state finds itself, and the citizens of the state finds themselves. So we've gone through here to try and, and get this bill, hopefully, in our mind, is a little bit clearer and a little bit more straightforward, a little bit more to the point. I think this bill did not, the other body spent most of the time talking about the other bill and not this bill. And so I don't know that I got a lot of, a tremendous amount of scrutiny down there, but it certainly got some. But the other, the thing we were trying to do, obviously, is when you look at this, is this is really is a fight that the state of Wyoming needs to take to the federal government. And again, we talk about the fact that, that, you know, there's a certain tension that exists between individual rights of individuals and business owners. And in this case, it's not necessarily business owners. This is the state of Wyoming. So when we're making this decision, public entities, when we talk about public entities as defined by sixteen six one oh one A, is basically any political subdivision, anybody who receives any kind of state funding, anybody who does any of that is a public entity. So it's cities, towns, counties, special districts. It's a state hospital. It's the, it's the Wyoming Life Resource Center. It's the, it's the, it's the, I can't remember the, they're Pioneer Home, and then what's the one in Basin? The facility in Basin, that's basically the state, the state-run nurse facility, skilled nurse facility in Basin. Those are all, those are all entities of the state of Wyoming. When we talk about this and where it goes, for example, those entities, the extent that they receive federal funds and for Medicare or Medicaid, potentially gone. We have, we have lots of people that, lots of, you know, we have billions of dollars in Medicare that goes out, that comes to the state and goes out, that potentially could be jeopardized in some degree by state action. There's one point three billion dollars in Medicaid that goes out of which the state pays the other half, the federal government pays half, that those types of things that come through the federal agency in charge of administering those types of, of funds. All those things potentially are at risk if we're not careful. And so when we're making this decision, we're making it not just for the state of Wyoming, we're making it for every individual who receives services in the state of Wyoming, for, like I say, every commission, every, everything that has any kind of federal funding attached to it. You're potentially affecting that. And so the basis of it is, where before they, they tried, our friends on the other side tried to simply say that it's any public entity does not include any entity receiving federal funding. Ultimately, we've struck that. But then the other thing that this does to try and strike that balance in the direction is because effectively there already is a lawsuit filed that was filed last week, effectively the action or the act of this is stayed going forward. And so, in my mind, that's, that's not ideal for those who want to press the battle, but it will certainly save a lot of casualties going forward. And, and at least for me, I'm not, I was not comfortable making that decision for every, every commission, every board, every special district, every anybody that might have or otherwise be affected by federal funds. If you have federal lands in your county, you, anybody's potentially affected by this. So this is, it's broad reaching, and I don't know that we know today, as we said, how far broad reaching it is, but it's also instructive, Mr. Chairman, about how far the federal clinicals have gone into the state. And I hope that's a wake-up call to all of us. We and our sister states will start to be more careful and cognizant about what we do. And as we look and look at federal legislation that comes, and also look at the federal money as it comes. We have, if we're going to be, if we're going to maintain and respect our sovereignty, we've got to draw a line in the sand. My hope is, as we move this, that we can work this bill together. And at the end of the day, if we can get it through, if we can get it through committee of the whole, by the time we do it, that at least, if we're going to send a universal ill will to the folks in the federal government, that we at least have something we can stick a postage stamp on and see that they get it instead of, maybe they find it in uncodified laws in the state of Wyoming. But ultimately, it is time to draw a line in the stand. I hope that we can work together on this. This is certainly not, nobody, I don't think anybody will say that's ideal, whether you voted for it or against it, but it gives us a start and gives us a vehicle to continue the debate and see if we can figure out how to work on this thing together. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We're on the bill. Senator Beschard, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. First words I heard was wheelhouse. I think the people are going to start seeing what's going on here. You have Medicaid expansion that goes through revenue, instead of going through healthcare. You know, we did that to get around healthcare committee because we voted it down. So we get it over to another committee so we can pass it. We've had that on the floor during this session. It wasn't a darn thing to do with what we, we came down here for.
Senator Hicks, go ahead, sir.
Is this specific discussion germane to the bill?
Mr. Chairman.
I would instruct, go ahead and keep it germane to the bill.
I think I got a right, just as much as you do, to stand up here and say it. I've listened to you talk about Madison for two hours to crush a bill.
President, go ahead, sir.
We'd ask that all comments be directed to the chair. It's a legitimate question to ask if it's germane to the bill. Let's stick to the bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Members, I would ask we stick to the bill and we maintain decorum. We're a professional group here. Let's maintain decorum and address each other appropriately. Please proceed and maintain.
Chairman, I apologize. First thing that we've amended was Article one, section thirty-eight, right out of the bill. Says it all. It says it all about the direction we're going. We've had other bills to hear. They're dead. But we're going to work this bill. First thing I see is we amend the Constitution right out of the bill. We can't have reference to that. We're, we're, each competent adult has a, has a right to make his or own healthcare decision on page five, starting on line three. That says it all. Now, I think we have a bill now that we, clearly at this point, we have to vote against.
We're on the bill. Further discussion? Senator Hicks. Senator Hicks, go ahead.
For the House, it paraphrased Article one, section thirty-eight. What we actually did in the Senate Appropriations Committee is brought the exact verbiage out of Article one, section thirty-eight. Now, I understand it's kind of hard to track amendments in, but, Mr. Chairman, that's the effect of the amendment. It brought the exact verbiage right out of the Constitution into the bill, just for clarification's sake.
Thank you, Senator Hicks. Further discussion? Senator Hutchins.
Chairman, this is for the Appropriations Committee, I think it's on the right bill. Page seven, lines one or two through six. I understand what they've tried to do there, Mr. Chairman, but I'd like to, little clarification or just maybe some idea if calling their bluff would be a better move, if that makes sense, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Kinskey.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. So if my colleague would turn at some point, you don't have to do it now, but sixteen six one oh one A, Romanet eight, basically defines every single political subdivision in the state. It's the state, it's counties, it's cities, it's, it's weed and pest districts, it's school districts, it's, it's every portion of the state. And originally, the way it came over from the House, excuse me, the other body, is it said they would exempt from, from the requirement that you not cooperate with the feds, any entity that was receiving federal funding that would be jeopardized, which is probably every single public entity. And the approach that your committee decided to take is, is let's, let's strike that out. And then what we inserted was, there's a prohibition against cooperation with this mandate, but it is not enforced until all the lawsuits are resolved, and we either win or we lose. The reason for that is, as, as the chairman alluded, we're trying to strike this balance between having a case to make in court, but not chewing up all the innocent along the way. If you told everybody in the government, don't, don't listen to what the feds have to say, disobey them, and the feds say, that's fine, we just cut off your Medicaid and Medicare. You know, that's, that's not a workable solution. That's fine. You just, you just don't get to renew your BLM lease. So, we're trying to thread the needle by creating a case that they are treading improperly, but that, at the same time, we're trying to avoid collateral damage. The request we heard from everybody appeared is, don't make, don't put business and don't put everybody else in between a battle between the state of Wyoming and the feds. So that's the way we're threading the needle, is saying, on a couple of fronts, we're trying to set up a legal assault on, on several different fronts and trying to establish what's called standing. So the initiatives from, from the federal administration are on three fronts. One is OSHA, two is anybody that gets a grant or a contract, and then just everybody that gets the benefit of Medicaid and Medicare. So with respect to the state, the first step, which is the largest part of this bill, is under the commandeering cases where the courts have said, you know, feds, you can't make the states do all your work. You can't, can't order them to, into service to do whatever it is you want. There's a series of cases there. They go both ways. And so what we're saying is, we won't, essentially, we're not going to cooperate with you, but we're going to, we're going to put that on hold until the litigation is completed, because we just can't risk shutting down, for instance, our Medicaid and Medicare program. The second, the second front is that the state itself receives grants and Medicaid and Medicare, very large quantities, and we're And we're trying to leverage off of the ACA decision where Justice Roberts said, you, you have told the states they have to adopt expansion or we will cut off all of your Medicaid and Medicare money. And have called it an inducement. And Justice Roberts said, that is not an inducement, that's a gun to the head and you cannot do that. You are going too far against the principles of federalism and the separation of governments and the Tenth Amendment and the sovereignty of the states. You cannot do that. That was a key holding in, in the ACA case. And there, there was one other case in eighty-seven that sort of hinted at that. But up until ACA, no federal law or statute have ever been struck down on that basis. So that, we're hanging a lot on what Justice Roberts had said in that case to say, we've got standing because we, we receive grants. We have contracts. We receive Medicare and Medicaid and you're cutting off, I don't know what percentage of the budget, but huge, arguably more than was at stake in the ACA. Next, with respect to the OSHA. And here I'm, I'm relating to the amendments that are on page two of your amendment sheet, where we talk about two other types of litigation. So the Romanet I refers to where we are bringing suits on our own behalf. And Romanet two says initiating a class action lawsuit on behalf of the state as lead plaintiff and allowing other citizens to join who are injured. So the state of Wyoming, we could say, we're not going to enforce your OSHA mandate. Well, the feds just say, that's fine, we just take OSHA back and we'll enforce it directly, we don't need you. So this is what we're, we're saying here is any business that does have standing because they're being hurt, we will fund the lawsuit. So the businesses are being hurt, they don't have the resources. So typically the way this works is you, is you find a, you know, three or four sympathetic plaintiffs that are being injured. They sign on to the lawsuit and away you go because they, the businesses have standing to bring this action. And then additionally, there are non-governmental, governmental entities that receive grants or contracts. And again, we wouldn't necessarily have standing to represent them. So that's again, where under Romanet two, we would be able to say, we will fund the lawsuit to help represent yours. So we're trying to bring an initiative on behalf of businesses that are hurt. Anybody that receives any federal grant or has a federal contract. We want to be able to launch a legal assault in that regard. And then for the, anybody that's impacted by the OSHA, those businesses, and then the state of Wyoming itself. So it's on multiple fronts that we want to open this up. And so the, ultimately it comes down to whether we're really going to be able to pull this off by saying, we're, we're, we're going to defy you. But in the meantime, we're going to, we are going to withhold enforcement because I don't think we have any other choice. We're, we have to maintain that you've trombled on us, you've hurt us. But in the meantime, we can't enforce it or else we just, we're just being a real pickle. I mean, I, can you imagine shutting down the Medicaid and Medicare programs in the state of Wyoming? That just can't happen. So that's how the needle has been threaded, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Anderson.
Appropriate this ten million dollars from, is that, is that something the governor has in his budget or would we have to rebudget?
Senator Rothfuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. The first is about the concept of threading the needle and I'm trying to think through. And admittedly, it is a bit challenging to make sure that I've got the language, the amendment correct and how this would play out. But I'm thinking through a scenario. It's my understanding that effectively the action of the state to not enforce the mandate would effectively be stayed through this until all of the pending litigation is concluded. So we then jump to that, which is the first action point. Let's say that it's concluded. Well, what are the possible options of the conclusion? One, the state wins. I think I see what happens at that point. But I'm contemplating a scenario where the state loses or partially loses, which is actually the more complex circumstance, a lawsuit. If it's a slam dunk that just the Supreme Court says, yes, state, you have to adhere to this supremacy clause. Requires it, do as you're told. That, that becomes fairly clear also. But if it does get back to a decision, which is more akin to a partial decision, similar to the Sibylle's decision that the good vice president was referencing, where the case is concluded, but the court says something along the lines of, you don't have to make the mandate, but you'll lose your Medicaid if you don't. It's plausible. And then similar decisions with OSHA. You don't have to enforce it, but if you don't enforce it, OSHA will penalize you. As drafted, I see this, Mr. Chairman, as leaving that, leaving the state, leaving our companies in a circumstance where there is no remedy. The state shall not enforce, the penalties will go into effect and the businesses will suffer under that partial decision. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if I'm missing the workflow here or if there were some discussion along those lines. I'm, I'm just trying to think through scenarios of what would happen there. The second line of questions, Mr. Chairman, relates to the ten million dollars. I know that a lot of times we just throw large numbers and, and we just kind of wing it a little bit. But I'm, I am wondering if there is a justification for ten million. What we would expect for lawsuits, class action filings, what the legal fees generated might be, or whether that was just a high ceiling that would anticipate that it wouldn't very easily get spent. And, Mr. Chairman, the, the final question I would have on that ten million would be, was there interest in that? Was there interest in, in forming class action lawsuits from the stakeholders that provided testimony? And I guess I'll, I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman, and, and listen to those answers. Thank you.
Senator Perkins. Okay, Senator Hicks.
Chairman, I'll, I'll start out and then I'll let my colleagues bet clean up. So specific to my colleague from, from Natrona County, where's the ten million come from? It's general fund, the general fund appropriations. So, and then my colleague from Albany County, just to answer part of your questions on the ceiling. And so what we know is, is this is probably likely the current lawsuit that's been filed, just the first of many. Part of the reason that we don't know that is because we haven't seen any file, final rules by several of the federal agency, OSHA, maybe MSHA, CMS. So we're anticipating that there might be additional litigation expenses associated with those. The other part of that situation is, is when we brought in the action of a class action lawsuit that would allow employers to come in and proceed down that route, that could require substantial outside legal consultation and, and assistance to the attorney general's office. So we felt like ten million dollars was a reasonable placeholder. As this thing progresses, we work through the budget, we'll be back here in a couple of months and we all be discussing that. We'll have a lot more details in, Mr. Chairman, but for now, we felt that that was a reasonable and prudent amount of money to put in there pending additional regulations, rules, unconstitutional orders or what may be coming down the pike in the next couple of months.
Chairman Perkins.
Thank you. And just to amplify on what, what's the scenario, if you, if you go up and you lose or you lose part and you win part. And, and that's, that's where if you go back and read the memo that LSO gave us, I'm losing track of time, Mr. Chairman, that I'm not sure if it was last week or the week before, but they give us a memo on preemption. An example of when you lose a case, there was a certain case that a certain senator brought about, about data trespassing. And, and that one got struck down as unconstitutional. And even though it was still on the books and you could still, you could still, you know, you, you, it was punishable as a criminal, fine and jail and penalty. Ultimately, that, that law is now preempted because it's unconstitutional, so it can't be enforced. So, and then later we came back and we, and reluctantly repealed it, but it, you know, the, it had been done. So, so when, when a, when you get to preemption and, and the federal, the federal court has ruled that it's those parts that are, that are deemed unconstitutional, which would be deemed unconstitutional if Congress was deemed to have acted within its power and, and the, and the, and the regulations, orders that were within the power delegated by Congress to the executive to do that, then though that preemption would strike those and they'd be unenforceable. So the fact that this is a little bit different because this one, this, this bill particularly deals with the state and its institution. So it is the state that's mostly affected. And so as we go out and do that, I, there would, you would, you would hope and you would expect that the, between the, the attorney general, the county attorneys and the various city attorneys and things like that, they would, they'd be putting their heads together to find out what that meant and what that did. And so the, we would hope that we would have the common sense to not launch off over the precipice on suing the various subdivisions of the state of Wyoming until we understood what, 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 what it is and what context they violated in, in the context and in the meaning of the federal court. So that, those types of things happened, they happened, they've happened in Wyoming, they've happened all over the country. And you sort through it and you figure it out. And, and the preemptions, the preemptions on the, on the, on, those parts are applied. And, and quite frankly, then you have to come back and figure out with the, with the parts that may have been upheld. This is effectively, is there anything to enforce in any event? So those are, that's just the nature of the process, it's part of the process, it's how preemption works. And, and I would, I'm a lot more comfortable having those types, that kind of uncertainty when it's dealing with, the government is dealing with itself than it is when the government is imposing something on private citizens. House Bill two, zero, zero, one, zero, zero, two doesn't impose restrictions on private citizens. It imposes restrictions on the government and the government, and the state and its political subdivisions. It's, it's, it's governmental entities as it's defined. So that, that's a, that gives me a little bit more comfort. I would be very hesitant to do that if that was on private citizens and private businesses. But in this case, it's on the government. So I think that we have a little bit more opportunity to be circumspect and administer that type of situation more appropriately. Although maybe not. So thank you.
Senator Kinsky.
So just to, to follow up with that, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I direct folks to, to address my colleague's question further from the ivory tower. If you go to page seven, at the top, I'm going to read to you what we have by the time we line in all the amendments. At the top, we say a public entity is, you know, any public entity. Be, no public entity shall enforce any mandate or standard of the federal government that requires an employer to ensure a mandate. They show, anybody shall receive a COVID-19 vaccine. Then the next bit of language says, we struck C, and now we say subsection B, which says you, you shall not enforce any part of it, shall not be enforced until the date of the final disposition or resolution, including during the penancy of any appeal in any period between the entry of a judgment or mandate and appeal of the judgment or mandate of all federal litigation concerning federal nineteen vaccine mandates that conflict with subsection B. Then we have one more section, which is D, which has now been rewritten to, to state the following. Notwithstanding subsection C, subsection B shall be enforceable when all conflicting federal laws, rules, regulations are repealed, withdrawn, superseded or declared by a federal court of competent jurisdiction to be unlawful or unenforceable. In other words, if we lose, this, this thing's never enforceable. It's, it's only enforceable if we win. That, and that's the way we're trying to thread the needle. And, and I know, I apologize for the, the B, the C, the D, but that's, that's, we worked with what we got. We, we didn't, we didn't go to work on the bill we wanted, we worked, went on the work on the bill we got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I hope that helps clear it up.
Senator Rothfuss, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate those explanations and I understand the intent. I, I guess I would just ask to, to give some more thought. I, I still see a circumstance possible where it's deemed that both sides are kind of in an appropriate constitutional standing, again, a partial decision. So OSHA isn't necessarily preempting us. But OSHA is deemed to be acting within their legal right to fine our companies, but we would be acting within our legal right to not enforce it, albeit there would be fines. Which is effectively a split decision that I think triggers B because it meets the, all the cases are decided and we were not preempted. But there would be an enforcement action taken against us. And the B provision I think would kick in under those circumstances so that enforcement action would take place. But everyone was constitutionally just fine. Nobody's violating a law, nobody's violating a constitution, fines would just be doled out. And that's the concern. I might be wrong, but it's just the interpretation I'm making. And perhaps it's worth giving some thought if, if this passes committee of the whole to tighten that up to make sure that it meets that interest. If I'm wrong, that's fine too, Mr. Chairman. It's just a, a way that I'm interpreting it that, that I have concern about. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion, one bill, Senator Bytnan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Page seven, again, I'm, yeah, we're struggling here trying to quote, thread that needle. What I'm seeing is when we have paragraph C now, the way it reads, which basically says we're not going to do anything in paragraph B, we've really tipped the scales in favor of the employer versus the employee. So when we're telling those people that work for a public entity, you're pretty much on your own. You're, you're, I can't say what I will, you know what I mean? You're out of luck. Until this is all had, it's all been played out in court. My question is, what are, what are we going to do? What kind of protections do we have in place for those employees that will lose their job? Or are they simply just, they're, they're done? They're going to end up getting fired and then they're going to lose their livelihoods because we, we're afraid of getting the businesses caught in the crosshairs. Are they just collateral damage? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion answers. Senator Perkins, he's almost up. Go ahead, Senator Perkins.
Oh, I, I think the, the other, there's another bill that deals with employment practices. This bill doesn't deal with employment practices. This, this deals with, again, you go back, I think the explanation is that it deals with just mandates. And now obviously those mandates are there, the other, the other bill deals with employment practices. But this, this bill is just as the vice president explained. It's, this is a bill about public entities and, and you can, you can certainly do that. I mean, you can come, you can bring employment practices into this bill. But again, you have to, for going back to the example, since we talked about OSHA, I mean, there's already been, there's already been four states that have already said, no, we're not doing that. We're not going to enforce a mandate as a part of the OSHA guidelines. Those states that have what are called state approved plans, of which I believe there are twenty-two, Wyoming is one of them. And the, the four states that did that, that have state plans, their state plans are no longer in compliance. And so fine, the federal, the, the state employer, the state, the state OSHA folks don't have to go out and enforce that. But now the feds come in and enforce it. They have every right to come in. And indeed, my understanding is that I, is that in you, in our sister state, in Utah, a sister state to the southeast, the feds have come in and they've begun to levy fines. The difference between, now, you know, you might say, what's the difference between a federal fine and a state fine? The state plan, we have, we work, we've worked, we revised OSHA, gosh, it's been a few years ago. Revised OSHA so that we were interested in compliance, we were interested through compliance with education and having people work towards the solution, understanding what it is and having that compliance instead of just come and hammer them with a fine from day one. That's what our state, that's what our approved state plan does. Fine, we don't enforce that, the feds enforce it. They don't have a plan about education and compliance. It's just, it's just a hammer, they come and they fine you. That's now, my understanding is happening in Utah and some other states that have already decided they're not going to apply with an emergency temporary order issued, issued for OSHA. So we can do that. But this bill is not designed for employee protections as much as it is to, again, try and set a, a tone. We're trying to create a situation, one, that the state, we don't want your mandates. We don't, we think there's overreach. we don't want your mandates, we don't, we think there's overreach and it's reaching too far into what the state is doing, but we're also recognizing that the federal tentacles and the federal money is so substantial that we can be right, but if we don't have a state left, or for us, we can be right, but we don't have a state left that functions and provides even the basic services to patients in hospitals or to contractors, or that you start yanking out and we use primacy and everything from workers' comp to BE, to EPA, all those things, there might be a state worth rescuing. So you have to figure that out. Is this perfect? Oh, heck no. But, yeah, this bill is not, this bill doesn't have, it was not designed for employee protections, that there's other, there's another vehicle that's still out there that does that, this one doesn't. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Kinskey.
And for my colleague from the north, unfortunately, we're in a situation where there's no easy answers and not a lot of good ones. So the situation that you talk about, if we do nothing, and there's a fellow who's working for a company that's under an OSHA mandate and, and, and that company says, well, here, we finally got the regulations from the feds, line up, expose your arm, and he, he quits, he's in that situation no matter what we do. I mean, if we do nothing, he's in that situation. If we do this, what we're hoping for, the best case would be that all these lawsuits get filed against the feds and a federal judge somewhere issues an injunction and says, this whole deal is on hold until we get this sorted out. Now, you, you're not necessarily entitled to an injunction, you've got to be able to prove that there's irreparable harm and so forth, and, and maybe we can meet that standard. But the, the, the 10 lawsuits that are being brought by our AG now, and there's others better able to describe it than I can, but those states that they selected are in states where we think we're going to find a judge that's sympathetic to our cause, so we're just doing what people on the other side of the political spectrum does, we're shopping for the right judge. And so not only will we be saying that you're overreaching, but we are going to be seeking, I would hope, I would assume, we're going to be seeking injunction to shut this thing down until we get it all sorted out. So, so the fellow that you're concerned about would be safe for a period of time, we hope, until this thing gets, hopefully, to the US Supreme Court, or we get it resolved one way or the other. But I, I wish I could say there's an easy answer for, for that fellow, but there's not an easy answer here for any of us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Landau.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I really appreciate the patience of our friends on the Appropriations Committee, and thank you for the time you spent today working this bill. There's a lot to like about it, but I, I do want to say, for many of us, this is a lot to absorb in a hurry. I mean, we, we haven't seen this, and so I appreciate your patience with trying to walk some of us through who might be riding a little bit slower horse. So regarding businesses out there, there, there's one in my neighborhood, healthcare-related, that is tied in with the federal tentacles, as the chairman just pointed out, we've got lots of those in our state. I wonder, the discussion on page seven and several of the points that were made relate to this, but I want to maybe walk through, what, what does it mean for that business? It feels like to me that we might put our businesses in limbo. You know, it's, it's almost like, go ahead and defy the federal government and we're right behind you if a fight breaks out. Is that what we're doing? And, and is that going to be adequate enough for that entity that I just described to feel okay? And, and we're not going to lose patience because of that, hopefully, right? I mean, I, I'm just trying to play that through in my mind. How does, how do the boots on the ground react to this law? The second example would be, I heard from one of my constituents in the construction industry, and there was a rather significant bid up in the center part of the state, but it's, it's federal agency work. And so they rolled back in on the bid process and said, oh, by the way, every one of your employees has to be vaccinated. So I actually heard from, from two construction companies on this one, and they said, I don't, I don't think we can apply for that bid. So how does that play out here? Are we, are we helping those entities? I hope so, but I, I'm just trying to walk that through in my mind, again, a little bit of limbo. Let's just say that construction company goes ahead and bids and says, well, you can't force that because my state told me that you can't, and they said they're right behind me. And the feds say, so? I'm just, you know, as we work this through from committee of the whole on to secondary, whatever, maybe that's something that, that you could help me with on the committee. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Senator Hicks.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll try to take a stab at that. So as I think is described by my colleagues, is we're trying to, to, to thread that needle. So in essence, what we're doing here is we're going to say to your employers, our beef is not with you, it's with the federal government. And so what we're trying to accomplish here is to say, okay, federal government, you've gone overboard, you've overstepped. So what I would tell the employers out there around the state of Wyoming, wouldn't you like to have this federal mandate removed so they can't put that provision in your contracts in the first place? This is why we're funding the litigation, folks. This is what we're trying to do at the same time to say, look, what if this is struck down? What if this is struck down by the Circuit Court or any other competent jurisdiction within a federal court? In that particular case, you're by no obligations have to comply with that provision. But the answer to the question to me is very simple. What we're attempting to do here is take that federal mandate away that they're putting in those contracts to begin with in the first place. This is not a battle against that contract, it's a battle against the entity that stuck that language in the contract to begin with. So we're trying to alleviate those federal regulatory burdens that they're bringing through this mandate. So it will be completely up to an employer's choice as to whatever their policy would be under that scenario, that they're not dictated by federal mandates. That's what we're attempting to do here, is to deregulate, not increase regulations, Mr. Chairman. I hope that helps. That's the intent, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Perkins.
Thank you. Just, and, and we, we had the misfortune, excuse me, the fortune to spend hours with this today and last night, and y'all haven't had that. So let me, let me, this bill is, 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 the, the heart of this bill is very, very concise and simple. In fact, it's two sentences, if you go with me to page seven of your bill. And as amended, this is, this is the heart of the bill. Everything else about this is either findings or it's, or it's, okay, yeah, but, but this is the heart of the bill. Public entity means as defined as 166101A Romanet A. That's sentence one, basically means anything that has anything to do with the state, gives any kind of federal funding, like we talked about, see, it's the state, it's all its agencies, it's the University of Wyoming, it's community colleges, it's schools, it's anybody who gets any money from the state or gets its authority to get money through the state, such as a sewer improvement district, a, a conservation district, any of those things, all of those things are entities of the state. So that's what public entity means. That's, that's sentence one. Sentence two is right below that on line eight, this is the heart of the bill. No public entity shall enforce any mandate or standard of the federal government, whether emergency, temporary, permanent, that requires an employer to ensure or mandate that employee shall receive a COVID-19 vaccination. That's the bill, that's the intent, that is, Washington, we don't want your mandate and we don't want to enforce it in the state of Wyoming. That's the purpose of the bill. Now, if, if it was a, if it, if it wasn't so darn complicated, we could end the, that's all we had to do in the bill. But now the question is, all right, how do we not put everybody right in the crosshairs, right in that, right in the crossfire between the state of Wyoming and the federal government as we deal with this? And that's what the rest of the bill does. So it starts out and says, except as provided, except as otherwise provided as it's amended. Now what it says, as you go to the amendment, it says, it says that subsection B of this section, which is the thing that says, no public entity shall enforce or mandate any standard of the federal government, that's subsection B. So then subsection C says, except as otherwise provided in this section, subsection, subsection B of this section shall not be enforced until the date of final resolution or include, including during the penancy of any appeal and any period between entry of judgment or mandate and an appeal of the judgment or mandate of all federal litigation concerning COVID-19 vaccine mandates that conflict, conflict with subsection B of this, of this section. So what we're saying is, is that's our, our law is no mandates, we're not, we're not, we're not enforcing any mandates in this state, but recognizing the practicalities on the ground, we said, we recognize what that means in the grand scheme of things that we may, there may, we may not have a state left if we don't go about this in a little more temperate way. And so in that case, what we're going to do is we're going to stay the execution or stay the implementation of B, which is no public entity shall enforce, we're going to say, that's not going to apply until this is, this is settled in the federal courts. That's what this bill's doing, that's what we're trying to do. Doesn't go into employment, doesn't do any of those things, just talking about whether or not the state will, the state will, state will use its personnel and its forces, it's on, it's, whether they're on force mandates, that's what the bill does. So is it a gummer? Well, it's not going to provide relief for anybody today because you're going to be subject to the mandates, for the most part, they've already started, but it's not, we're not going to enforce this right now because we've already filed suit, we filed suit last week. So it stayed until that's, that resolution is ended. If you can figure out a way to not ruin the businesses of the state and, and deny all the, all the privileges and rights and all the services, medical services and other services that the people of the state receive that come with a federal price tag or a string attached, I'm all ears. But unless you can tell me that, we will destroy many lives and many businesses or risk destroying many lives and many businesses. And we can play chicken, we can say, no, let's just do B, end the story, let's do that, we can play chicken, and the body wants to do that, I mean, it also takes a 16 of you, so that's what we want to do. But in, in our estimation, this is how we do two things, we try and protect our citizens and protect our standing so we can have a say in the lawsuit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Kinskey, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and lest, I, I don't want to leave the impression that I'm, that, that we're comfortable with what we've hammered out. So to my friend from the center part of the state, are we helping those companies? You know, they're just as likely to look at you and say, hey, quit helping me here. You know, I, I don't need that kind of help. You know, I just want to run my business. All the hue and cry for a special session, there's a lot of folks back home, this is just real clear, real black and white, real easy, but it's not. And what we've drafted, you know, we heard people saying, you sure this is going to work? Right? Have you ever been in that situation where you're trying to come up with a solution and somebody turns to you and say, are you sure this is going to work? Say, well, I hope so. Famous last words, put that on your, on your tombstone, but there's something we could have missed, like my friend from the ivory tower, you know, it's a good question, what about a partial victory, partial defeat? You know, I hope our language protects us there, but I don't know that. The old, it's the old phrase, the thousand whispering voices of doubt. And so I would ask you to, to look at this closely, this really is a bill that should not be done in a special session in just a few days. This is a bill that should be worked and reworked and worked and reworked by a committee and, and have some of the smartest minds in the state look at it and see if we're missing something. Because my biggest worry is, we think we're threading the needle, we might in fact be too clever by half. We pass this thing and find out we've jeopardized our Medicaid, Medicare programs, we've got a real problem on our hands. So I would ask all of you to go through it with a fine-tooth comb. I would expect that, that overnight, the AG's office and, and other legal minds will take a look at it, business minds will take a look at it and see what are we missing? But I, I will tell you, the sentiment that we heard from the business community uniformly was, don't do this, and if you do this, be real sure that it's going to work because we're the people in the middle. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Are you ready for the question? All those in favor of Senator Perkins' motion to, when the committee of the whole rises to report, did it do so with the favorable recommendation of House Bill 1002? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
House Bill 1002 has passed committee of the whole. Do we have the next bill? Mr. Majority Floor Leader, do you have a motion, sir? Mr. Majority Floor Leader, do you have a motion? Would you perhaps like us to rise and beg to sit again? Mr. Chairman, thank you. Move the committee whole, beg, leave, to rise and sit again. Heard the motion, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We already, still sound of the gavel. Mr. President, reclaim your seat.
November 1st, 2021, Mr. President, your committee number two appropriations to whom was referred, House Bill 1001 engrosses COVID-19 vaccine employer mandates, respectfully report, saying back to the Senate with the recommendation that it do pass with the following amendments. Voting aye, Senators Hicks, Kinskey, and Steinmetz, voting no, Senator Giroux and Perkins.
Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Chairman, I stand at ease to the sound of the gavel for 10-minute break, please.
All right, before we move back in then, a little 10-minute break, folks. 10 minutes until the sound of the gavel. 10 minutes until the sound of the gavel.
Mr. Majority Floor Leader, we're at that order of business. Consideration bills on general file.
Mr. Majority Floor Leader, we're at that order of business. Consideration bills on general file.
Mr. President, privilege of floor just a second before we start.
Please do.
Folks, we're going to run until we're done with this, which we don't know how long that's going to take. For anybody that has amendments to this, nine o'clock tomorrow morning will be the deadline to get amendments into staff. Anything after that's won't be considered. So you've got after we're done tonight till nine o'clock in the morning. And we're going to do, you'll hear it at the end again as well, but we'll do a noon start tomorrow. So staff has a chance to do the amendments. So.
Hang on that.
With that, Mr. President, I move the Senate resolve itself into.
Wait, wait, before you do that.
Excuse me. Said noon. But I haven't made the motion yet. I'll make that one close. What?
Senator Driscoll, before you make the motion, we could actually get started at 10 a.m. with some of those. We could get everything moving forward. But the last, the amendments would have to be in by nine, but we have some now. So, Mr. Floor Leader, we could actually kind of get the process underway by 10 a.m.
I'm happy with that.
Okay. All right. Proceed that, just to double check then, folks, 9 a.m. the deadline for the amendments, 10 a.m. the startup, because we actually already have some in the system and we can keep it going and we don't have this downtime on the floor. All right. With that, Mr. Floor Leader.
Mr. President, I move Senate resolve itself into.
Heard the motion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Senator Baldwin, back in the chair. Go ahead, Senator.
We're, we're waiting for additional copies of the amendment to this bill to be distributed. Some of us do not yet have a copy of the amendment. Some people do.
It will pause for a moment where you get those. Who can those members who don't have a copy of the amendment, where your hand, one, two, two, the lucky two. We'll get them for you shortly.
Yeah, just one. Standing committee amendment. And then Affey, or did Affey get one? Okay.
Okay, everybody's got those now?
This, Mr. Chairman, I was just informed that when they were distributing them, I was speaking and they're, and, and they, they know better than to get between me and a microphone.
Understood completely, Senator Kinsky. The committee of the whole will come back to order. The next bill for our consideration is House Bill 1001. The reading clerk will read the bill.
House Bill 1001 COVID-19 vaccine employer mandates, an act relating to labor and employment sponsored by Representative Greer. It was referred to committee number two appropriations that returned a due pass amended recommendation. Voting aye, where Senators Hicks, Kinsky, and Steinmetz. Voting no, Senators Gru and Perkins. Signed Drew Perkins, Chairman.
Heard the reading of the bill. What is your pleasure, Chairman Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that when this committee, the whole rise and report that it do so with the due pass recommendation on House Bill 1001, there is also a standing committee amendment. Could we please have that amendment read in?
House Bill 1001, standing committee amendment number one to engross copy, page one, line two.
Proceed, Chairman Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd move standing committee amendment number one to House Bill one and ask the body's favorable consideration. What we'll do is I think that it's probably best if we, I'll try and go through this and we'll talk about the bill and I'll try and and call your attention to the amendments as we go through the bill, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay with you. And I'll try and, and call your attention to the amendments as we go through the bill, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay with you.
That sounds absolutely perfect.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen of the Senate, this is a, it is a complicated bill. This is much more complicated than the other one. Because it's dealing with a complicated issue, which is employment practices. And so we'll go through that. My, I was following this House, this bill a little bit on the other side as it went through, and I think there's probably thirty odd amendments. They didn't, certainly didn't pass all those. But it was heavily amended and, and from the initial reports, it looks like it's gonna have the same fate on this side too. So this is just the beginning, but strap in and we'll get through it. The, so what we've got on, and as we go through the bill, of course, the first page is generally, it's an act for employment. And it's prohibiting employers from Wyoming from requiring COVID-19 vaccinations. That's the main use of it. And particularly with emergency use or COVID vaccine, that's a condition of, or a condition of employment. And so that's the general concept of the bill. And so as we go through it, we find in Section One, we just have some definitions. I think the, as you go through the, the, if you look, all the stuff on page one is just amending the title to the bill. That's important, but obviously if we're talking about it there, we'll be talking about it in more detail later on. So if you get down, then if we talk down, so we get to, get to, on the amendment, we're talking about page two, lines nineteen through twenty-two. So you see on page two, you see the American Rescue Plan Act funds. There's a definition for that. We've defined COVID-19, which has already been defined in statute, which has already been defined in statute. And then we get down, and this is where the First Amendment comes through. What, what the bill did as it left the other body was it split COVID vaccines into two, two kinds of COVID vaccines. And you see those in, in the original bill on Romanet Three and Romanet Four, which are lines fifteen, and then also again on nineteen on page two. And so you see COVID vaccine under Romanet Three on line fifteen. COVID vaccine, nineteen vaccine means any vaccine that is marked to prevent COVID-19 or any vaccine that is marketed to diminish or decrease symptoms of COVID-19. And what we've talked about before is that for most of us, that's when we talk about COVID-19. I think that that's what most of us understand a COVID-19 vaccine to mean is one of those. It used to mean that would, would prevent COVID-19, but since we've seen the efficacies not being, and some of them, they've now been started to market them as to diminish or to at least decrease symptoms of COVID-19. And then down below, you see that there was now a different kind of COVID-19. So emergency use vaccine, emergency authorized COVID-19 vaccine means a COVID vaccine, nineteen vaccine that has received emergency use authorization from the United States Food and Drug Administration, but it's not received full approval. Well, we've all heard testimony about that. It talks more about that. But what that essentially means is if you listen to some of the testimony, assuming that all the testimony received is true. And of course, we all know about data. We've all had lots of data thrown at us over there, and you can find that at the supports, whatever position you take on COVID-19 vaccines. So given that, from the information, at least from some testimony we've seen today, is that the COVID, the, the one vaccine that was FDA approved really isn't available in the United States. So apparently, we may not have any COVID vaccines that have been approved, and so they're all emergency use vaccines. In that context, the, the amendment, what this, what this amendment does on page ten, that you see down page ten, lines nineteen through twenty-one, and then page three, lines one and two. It strikes the definition of emergency use vaccine, because ultimately, it's just, we just, I think most of us all think of a vaccine as just a vaccine. We can, we can talk about whether or not it's emergency use. We can talk about whether it's been approved by the FDA. But ultimately, when we talk about COVID-19 vaccinations, we're talking about typically one of the four or five vaccines that are out there. And so, so it was the, not the unanimous decision of the committee, but the, the split decision of the committee. That this act is, it's more plain if we just don't just distinguish between the different types of vaccines and just call them COVID-19 vaccines. And you'll see why that's important here in just a minute. So then we go to, so that gets us through page two. So we get to page three. We come down here, we have another definition employee. I think that's the, the normal one that we have. And then this is really, this is really important definition on line seven of page three. And we only, we tweaked this a little bit, not to change the meaning, but to change the, the, who, who it all catches. So we've all heard about the hundred person, the hundred employee or more employees performing services for employment. So that's, there are three definitions in here that get captured as an employer under this bill. The first one you see is employer means any person, organization that has, and this is the first one. And it's employ one hundred or more employees performing services for it in employment. That's number one. That's the first type of employer. The second employer that's captured in this, if we continue, is any person or organization with at least one employee. And has contracts involving Medicare and Medicaid in the course of the employer's business. So that's number two. So that's the two types. So you have a hundred percent, if you're just any employer that has more than a hundred percent. Or anybody who has any employees that deals in Medicare or Medicaid. That's a covered employer under this bill as well. Then the third type of employer we see now is really on line twelve and thirteen. It starts there. And any person or organization with at least one employee. And has any other federal contract in the, in, in, in the course of the employer's business. And so that brings us to the amendment. That what we did there is if you, if you look, what we did, the amendment there, so go to, this is line twenty-one on the amendment. So line twenty-one on page one of the amendment. We see that we've deleted contract and inserted is subject to federal acquisition or procurement regulations or requirements established by the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services for Payment. And so what we're trying to do is broaden that, because what we have is there's a, the, the, the executive order that's out. Is, is talking about anybody who basically is under the federal acquisition regulations or the federal procurement regulations. And so, and anybody who's a subcontractor for them, and they've defined, or, and it's not just whether you have a contract, it's any contract-like arrangement with the federal government. And so if you're subcontractor to them, so if you're, if you're providing just water, you're providing nails, you're providing. You're providing hardware, you're providing any car service, you're providing, you're going in and maybe providing IT services. You're providing lawn services. You're cutting the grass for somebody that's receiving Medicare or Medicaid. Then the, the executive order is imposing those down the line so that the contractors obliged to make sure that all the subcontractors are also under the vaccine mandate. And so what we're trying to do with that amendment is make sure that if we're gonna do this, we're trying to get everybody who's going to be subject to a vaccine mandate under the federal government. We're trying to pull them within this definition of employer. All right. So that's, that's the idea. And what we're trying to do with the amendment on the, on line seven, excuse me, on line seven of page three. So as amended, whether, whether, even with the new language, the intent is simply to cover everybody that's gonna be somehow impacted. And subject either directly or indirectly to COVID mandate because of, of either the, the, because they're Medicaid or Medicare, and it's gonna potentially affect the payments. Or if you're a concessionaire in a, in a national park, and you're selling items in a gift shop. Everybody provides water to you, even if it came from a spring and, and, even if it came from a spring in Waskey County, Wyoming. If it's gonna be sold in the concession or shop in, in Yellowstone Park. The, you're, you're a supplier, you're gonna be, you're gonna be, they're gonna, the federal government's trying to push the mandate out down to that level. And so that gets us through the definition. So that gets us to section two. So then, then this is, this is the first major substantive, in my mind, the, the, the biggest substantive amendment which goes with the definition. So then the, the next item is that you go to line three, and what we're doing is on line eighteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, we're basically deleting that sentence. And then we're leaving, then that leaves, if you'll read that paragraph, I think you'll understand why. So if you read, if you begin reading the existing bill on, on page eighteen, excuse me, on line eighteen of page three. We have, notwithstanding any Wyoming law to the contrary, no employer in the state of Wyoming shall require or mandate an employee to receive. An emergency use authorized COVID vaccine as a condition of employment, period. A total and complete ban. That's what that sentence would do. The amendment would strike that sentence. So then what that does leave in is if you continue reading, then line twenty-two, this subsection A would begin then with line twenty-two, which is very similar sentence. It says, notwithstanding any Wyoming law to the contrary, no employer in the state of Wyoming shall require or mandate an employee to receive. A COVID-19 vaccine as a condition of employment unless all the following requirements are met. So again, we, if we change the definition, so it's any COVID vaccine, we don't care whether it's been FDA approved or not. It's a COVID-19 vaccine. And so if you do that, you can only have a mandate if you do these following provisions. And so they, we go down through the provisions, and there's a few minor changes to those. So if we start with the, these are the exceptions to the COVID mandate, a COVID mandate as a condition of employment. So if we start on line five, you see that the employer determines that requiring or mandating a COVID vaccination is critical. And so you'll see there that we're gonna strike critical and certain important. That's, that is one, and the reason, reason that is, is critical. There was, there, there was some concern expressed both by me and some, and, and some other people on the committee, as well as some of the testimony we have. The critical can mean absolutely essentially vital, and that may be an incredibly high standard for some employers to meet. And so the idea was that it would be important, it's just a little bit lesser standard, so that it not be critical is oftentimes. At least in the context of a constitutional examination by a court, means that there cannot be a less intrusive or less restrictive ability to do that. And so we're trying to make sure that our employers have some ability to function, even in, even in the event of a, of a, of a mandate. So that's, so that, so line six, again, changing critical, so, so that you, the exemption is that, that. The employer determines that many and COVID-19 vaccinations are important to ensuring the health, safety, and welfare of the workplace. Would otherwise, or, this is the other prong, so it can do that one, or it can also be an exemption, because it would otherwise jeopardize the business. And the employer provides, it says, evidence of that determination to Department of Workforce Services. The other amendment you see right below that is we're striking evidence and putting notice to Department of Workforce Services. And so the, and we'll, we'll talk a little bit about the Department of Workforce Services. So you will provide notice that, that you are requiring and mandating that. And why, the employer's gonna have to say why they're doing that is either because it's necessary, or it's important to ensuring the health, safety, and welfare of the workplace. Or that it would jeopardize the business, which could be, can't get employees, could be, you, you'll lose money under your, you won't be able to have a federal contract. You'll, you'll be thrown out of the ability to bid on federal projects or even provide supplies to federal workforce. As federal, any kind of federal, federally funded enterprise that's going on. And so we, and then the people who are gonna look over that, you gotta file that as Department of Workforce Services. And so they'll be looking at those notices, and they'll be, they'll have to establish some rules, some regulations, so they can determine if that's a fair notice under the, under what the statute that we provided here. So you don't, you can, you can do it, but you're not, the employer's not gonna be able to just do, say whatever they want. There's gonna have to be some actual reason they're gonna have to provide in their notice. The, the department will provide what they have to provide in order to justify that they're going to put a COVID-19 mandate on. And, and, and they have to meet, and it has to be established by, through one of those two ways to do it. So then the employer, then we get down to twelve, the employer provides an exact exemptions to the requirement or mandate upon submission of written. Again, this will change to notice, change from evidence to notice under the amendment in accordance with the following. And so now we're talking about, the employer's put in a mandate, they've justified what it is, and so now they have to provide, they have to provide some exceptions. And so the first exception is employer shall grant an exemption for religious grounds upon the submission of an exemption is what it is. What we're doing, we had a lot, we had quite a bit of testimony that there are a bunch, already substantial number of E O C C. Means Equal Opportunity, the Employment Commission guidelines, they're federal guidelines, but they're enforced at the state level. And the people in the State Department of Workforce Services enforce those guidelines throughout the state in fair employment practices or equal opportunity practices. And so there's, medical exceptions already exist in equal opportunity employment. And so we're tying it back to something that employers are familiar with, and is already established, and there's already a way to know what that standard is. And so if, if it's applicable through a, a, oh, and I, I'm sorry, I screwed up. This is about a religious exemption. Excuse me, I was one ahead. We're talking about religious exemptions under, on line sixteen and seventeen of the bill. And so they grant, there's a religious exemption, and again, the E O C has guidelines for that. You have to provide, you have to provide reasonable accommodations for religious practices and other things in your workplace now. And so those are already, those are already enforced about when those are appropriate and when, and when they're such that employer has to, has to grant the exemption. And so there's already a standard there, and it just allows these religious exemptions to still exist. But it ties it to a standard that, that is already known and familiar with by both the Department of Workforce Services and employers in general. So then you drop down to B, which begins on line nineteen. An employer shall grant an exemption for on medical grounds upon submission of an exemption that is complete, medical exemption. And then what, it goes on, and then what the, what the amendment does is on page four, on lines, you see right here, we, we're also saying delete, grant, and insert, consider. So an employer shall consider an exemption on medical grounds. And after exemption, excuse me, after exemption, it says, which shall be granted or denied in accordance with applicable guidelines of the Federal Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, which is the E E L C. So once you're down to medical grounds, you're now coming under the provisions of the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA. Whenever you're talking about medical exemptions, then you're, you're, think disability. Because under the ADA, many of your, many of your conditions, medical conditions, for example, diabetes, disability. And so there's already a framework in place that Department of Workforce Services is familiar with on medical exemptions and at work and providing reasonable accommodations. And so the, your, your community thought that that was a, a better choice, and one that both the department would understand and employers. And to some extent, employees who've been involved with it would understand, you'd have a process that would already be known and understood. And give us a much better head start on enforcement than if we started from scratch and did something different. And so the other thing we're doing there is you see on line four, on, on, again, you'll see in both of those where it says. In both, on line sixteen and line nineteen on page four, where it says an employer shall grant, now it's been changed to employer may or shall consider. Because you, we're not ordering to it, if there's, there can be justifications when an employer doesn't have to grant your reasonable accommodation if it just doesn't work. So then we came down, that gets us through, I think through page four. We get down through, we see online, we're deleting twenty-one to twenty, we just ended there. We had a bunch of other things that went in about what to take in consideration. Again, when we tie that back to the E O C, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, and how that's done. Then we don't, then we can do away with those other guidelines and provide some better certainty to both employers and employees. So that gets us through to the top of page six. Now we're down to. You see where we're deleting the rest of those lines. You get down to line, you get down to line seven after COVID-19. So now we're talking about when they do that, what are reasonable alternatives? If you look on, 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 on page six of the bill, line four and five, you see this term reasonable alternative measures. And every place that it said reasonable alternative measures, we're changing that to be reasonable accommodations. Again, that's language out of the ADA, since typical medical excuses or medical exemptions are considered to be disabilities. Again, we're trying to tie that back, so it's a more familiar framework for everybody to deal with. And so we're referring, any place you would have seen the bill that says reasonable alternative measures, you'll see it's gonna be changed to reasonable accommodations. So it matches up, it syncs up with the ADA language. And so we have. On, if we go down to line seven after COVID-19, so in this one, we're talking about in, in the middle of page six, the reassignment of work duties, the work stations. We're talking about how you, how you do some of those things, and. Now we get, let me find my place again. We see again, alternative measures become reasonable accommodations. Where's the COVID night? Oh, okay. I skipped this part. I apologize. So if we go back, I, I skipped over C, which is, which is on page five, lines four through seven. So if we go back, I, I skipped over C, which is, which is, uh, on page five, lines four through seven. And so ultimately, lines four through seven, on page five, lines four through seven, if you see, we had a lot of discussion about this and, uh, ultimately majority, uh, majority of the, a majority of the committee decided that what they would do, uh, to the existing is they're going to change these upon written evidence that the employee has prevented, has previously tested positive for COVID-19, we're modifying that portion of that paragraph so that if you go to, uh, line 13 on page two, after COVID-19 insert, now you see, or upon evidence of a laboratory test detecting the presence of antibodies to COVID-19. And so we're just, that written evidence is going to be, you're going to have to basically present a laboratory test. So that's, uh, that's how that one came down, I apologize, I skipped over that one. I think that gets us again back to page six, now we're starting to talk about, um, making these alternate, changing alternative measures to reasonable accommodations. You'll see we're just changing the, those are just conforming amendments to get measures, anywhere you see reasonable measures, it's going to turn into reasonable accommodations. We can't, so anything that's a reasonable alternative measure is going to be turned to a reasonable accommodation. And those, the rest of those are mostly just conforming languages, uh, conforming changes. Then you get to line 38 on page two of the amendment where we talk about delete burden and insert hardship. Again, um, there was belief in the committee that when usually we, we don't talk about an undue burden on employers, but we do talk about undue hardships on employers, and so it's just conforming language to try and bring that in, into a framework that more, we believe more employers and more employees and the department are more familiar with, and so it'll aid in the administration of this, of this act. If you go to, and then if you go, uh, the next kind of major change is on, uh, on page six, line 18. And after that, you see the, the original language on line 18 was talked about, uh, providing COVID-19 text testing in the middle of that line, provided that testing means other than by nasal pharyngeal swab, also offered by employees when available, and the committee changed that to, changed that to by means other, so it just was other, by means other, so you can provide it, was trying to get that you didn't have to, you had to provide these, you didn't have to do these, these nasal pharyngeal swabs, the testimony we had that you kind of have to take whatever tests are available. And so the supply of tests and the supply chain is affecting like everything else, it's, 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 it's doing tests, and so the employers just have to do, they can do whatever is available, so the employers can test whoever needs to be tested. So as a reasonable alternative, uh, classic example is you're going to have to test once a week. If you don't, if you haven't been vaccinated, you're going to have to test once a week. And if, if it's, if they can do without swabbing, great, but if those tests aren't available, or they're not readily available either because of supply problems or other issues, then you may have to do the swabs, but we're not excluding that at, at some point. We all know about the shortages that are, are going around, so that was the decision of the committee with respect to, um, to those parts of the page. So for that gets us through to page seven. On page seven, the big thing there was that the committee deleted subsection B there, which is basically lines nine through 17. What, what that is, is the employers, anybody who first required a mandate, if they did it intentionally, then they were deemed to have committed an unfair employment practice. The testimony we had from employers that being deemed to have done an unfair employment practice has far reaching ramifications over just the fact of whether or not an employee, um, you know, it's, it basically, that's what's, that's what you do when somebody's discriminated based on race, religion, or other things like that. And so they've discriminated in that regard, and so ultimately what this is, is this was, uh, you, you, it put it in that, you go through a process, the, uh, the, the Employment Commission would undertake that complaint, it would go through the process, um, they make findings, and when you do that, it can include back pay, it can front pay, it can, it conclude, uh, just about any kind of benefits you have, it was in there, and so ultimately, uh, our committee is just not very fond of lawsuits. And we didn't want these lawsuits to come out and plague that. Additionally, you look at employers and as complicated as this is, and what's, where it's headed, the ability to show that a employer knowingly imposed a COVID-19 is, uh, you know, I, I think just the fact that this is going to be in the non codified statutes may, may provide a defense, the fact that whether or not they knowingly did it or not, and it separate, differentiated between who unknowingly, when, when an employer unknowingly creates a COVID-19 vaccination mandated requirement. Um, and so ultimately, we took the, 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 uh, termination, the committee was to remove that so that we didn't want to have those additional lawsuits. Then, uh, we let the, I think that gets us basically through, uh, through to page eight. There were no changes to see, even though the Department of Workforce Services is not going to be, would not be hearing unfair employment practice, um, cases, they still are administering the plans and the exemptions, uh, and, and administering all those types of things, so they're still going to have to promulgate rules and do other things in that regard. If you go to page eight, if you go to the next major, uh, change was on page eight, lines four through 17, the, the, uh, decision of the committee was to delete that, mostly because we didn't know what the paragraph did, which said, nothing in this section shall be construed to limit or preclude an employee who is unemployed from receiving any other benefit to which the employee is retitled, entitled to receive under law.
Point of order, Senator Anderson.
If I said, thank you, Mr. Chairman, if I said four through 17, I misspoke, it's four through seven.
You do it and you stand corrected.
Thank you, and so thank you for that. Just, we, uh, first of all, when I first read it, I said, I don't know how an employee can be unemployed, if they're unemployed, they're no longer an employee. But that being said, there, there's no, we, we, we didn't know what that meant. We didn't know if that meant, do they still get to collect vacation pay? Do they still get sick leave? Do they still get retirement? Do they still have to be paid salary? What does that mean? That they're entitled to any other benefit, they're entitled under law, and if they're entitled to it under law, having it in here doesn't do away with it. So we, we couldn't figure out what that did, and so ultimately, the decision of your committee was to delete those, delete that section. So then the rest of this is see in section, so section three, there's an appropriation of $400,000 to the Department of, uh, Workforce Services, they've got rules to imply, they've got to put a, they've got to put a review process in place, they've got rules to promulgate about how they're going to review and decide whether these both look at the exemptions and the plans. When employers want to impose mandates, they're going to have to review those and make sure it complies with the law. And also when they do, if they're going to do, and they're going to provide exemptions to make sure that whatever exemptions they are providing to their employees will also comply with the law, so there's work that they have to do, and so the appropriation stayed in, as did the other items. I think that gets us to, uh, page, I think that gets us then all the way to page 10. And when you get to page 10, you'll see, uh, you'll see in particular section, lines, uh, one through nine on page 10, and you'll see that's that same language, and what this does is this brings it back and syncs it up with what we did in the other bill, but ultimately, and, and, and you can read what it says there, it, so the, the section B goes away and we replace it now with a, with an, with an A and a B, the subject to the provisions of the section, the provisions of section two of this act shall not be enforced until the date of the final disposition regulation and all that. So, so the, uh, um, so the provisions, this will be stayed, once there's been a federal lawsuit filed, which I believe there has been. And then under B, it also says that it comes back and says, subject to subsections, subsection C of this section, the provisions of section two of this act are repealed, and this kind of goes to what, a little discussion we had just a little while ago about the fact that if the conflicting federal regulation rule standard or other, or order concerning a COVID-19 vaccination requirement or mandate is upheld in a federal court, then these are repealed. So ultimately, if these are termed to be, uh, to be unconstitutional, then, uh, after the court hearings, then they're automatically repealed. So with, that's what that did, then section, um, section five at the bottom of 10 is just basically an applicability statute, it's, 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 it's to whom this applies and when it applies, and that, that was unchanged, but ultimately, it's, uh, as you see, the, this is going to apply only to employers that require a mandate their employees to receive a COVID-19 vaccination as a condition of employment that takes effect on or after the effective date of this act, and to employers who have issued a COVID-19 vaccine mandated requirement before the effective date of this act, but that takes effect on or after the effective date of this act. So that's, uh, that's the, that's just trying to explain how we intend for this to apply. So if you've had one that's been enforced and enacted, it's going to, it's going to, it's retroactive, it's not going to apply to you, but if you have one that you passed, that doesn't, doesn't go into effect or isn't going to affect till later, or go, or it's already, you've already decided it's going to affect on a date certain, but that date certain is after the time that this becomes law, it would apply to that as well. And so with that, that is a very long-winded explanation of a very complicated case. Stand for questions.
Questions, we're on the amendments discussion, Senator, Senator Shuler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, my question is, is probably very vanilla-ish, and maybe it's such a gray area, I, I probably shouldn't even bring it up, but I wondered if there was a discussion on, um, page four, line 16, and page four, line 19, where you changed the word grant, uh, and made it consider, and I realized that you added, which I think was a good addition, um, that it's, you know, an exemption will be granted or denied in accordance with applicable guidelines of the Federal Equal Employee Opportunity Commission. But I just wondered if, even though you've added that, I just wondered maybe if a better word would be provide rather than consider, because my understanding is that in some of these situations, some of these areas, um, exemptions have not been granted, and, um, I, I did like the word grant, but I see that it doesn't really match up once you put in the, uh, Title VII, uh, E E O C requirements. So I just wondered if there was a chance of maybe making that word a little more strong rather than the consider, just a thought.
Senator Hudson.
Chair, I also had a question on, uh, those two considerations on page four, uh, line 16 and 19, the word consider, I don't like the addition of this shall be granted or denied in accordance with the guidelines of Federal Equal Employment Opportunities Commission, because I think our Wyoming Constitution is a lot stronger, a lot clearer, and is readily available for anybody to read Article One, Section, let me see, which one is that, 18, and Article 21, Section 24. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, or 25, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Senator Ellis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, a question on the amendment, looking at page three, lines 18 through 24, this concept of, um, section two being repealed by a trigger happening in federal courts. I was just wondering the logistics of how, um, the bringers of this amendment kind of conceptually see that playing out. You know, is that, I, I just don't understand that trigger, I understand the intent of it, but I just don't understand how it works, so a little discussion on that would be great.
Senator Perkins, would you like to address those? Or? Senator Kinsky, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, grant goes away, but he comes back. So if you, if you track me through on the amendment, the employer shall, let's, let's go back to that one. The concern was it said it shall grant, and a lot of business people were saying, well, does that mean I have to grant it? So what it now reads is, the employer shall consider an exemption which shall, for religious grounds, upon submission of an exemption, which shall be granted or denied, so the granted comes back in accordance with applicable guidelines of the E O C. So, um, they, they're, their obligation is to consider it and then to grant or deny it according to the, the guidelines, they're just, the initial concern was when it shall grant meant that they didn't have any choice, they just had to grant it. The trigger, and, uh, on page three, uh, of the amendment, lines one through 27, I, I were welcome, I welcome any clarification anybody wants to render on these. Uh, what we started with originally, on page nine, nine, pages nine and 10, you know, we, we struggled to understand that, but the original one said, to the extent that anything here conflicts with any federal law, it won't be enforced after that federal law takes effect. Then two says, notwithstanding A, it shall be enforceable during any period under which that federal law is subject to a stay. And so that created the idea, or is otherwise repealed, so the concern was, is that it might be enjoined, then the injunction lifted. So it's enjoined, and now it's, it's, you know, they passed the laws, and, and, uh, now employers follow this law, it's follow the Wyoming law. Then the federal law is enjoined, or, now you got to, let me see, how does that work? The federal law comes in, employers, you got to follow the federal law, but the federal law then gets enjoined, okay, employers, now you're going to follow the Wyoming law. And the danger was that you get in a tennis match where these injunctions are granted and lifted, and so it, they're going back and forth between having to follow a federal standard and a state standard. So we adopted the same language we had in the other situation, which says that the provisions of this section will not be enforced until the date of final disposition or resolution, including a penancy of any appeal of all federal litigation. And then in B, it does become enforceable once all federal laws, rules, regulations are withdrawn, or, or, or we win and they're found to be, um, enforceable, let me see, did I read that right? I think so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if I helped or not.
A valiant effort nonetheless. Senator Bouchard, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have a question. I, I heard it in committee, and I've heard it again, we have to follow the E E O C. Strangely, there's court cases that have been, uh, won by an individual, and the argument that we've made as a state is we don't have to follow what they say, they're not, we're not under their jurisdiction. But here, we're saying we are, so I'm just trying to figure out, do we pick and choose when we do that? If it's against the state, you're going to have to do it. But when it's against the citizens, well, you're going to have to do it. I'm, I'm lost. Can I have some clarification on that? When, when do we have to follow it if, if the state itself isn't following it?
Chairman Perkins.
Thank you. So I, I, I think, I, I hopefully we can, we, we took care of the shall consider versus grant. Uh, at, at, at the end of the day, it's, there are exceptions to both the prohibition against employers having a mandate, and there's exceptions to, to employees who are seeking an exemption. There's exceptions to both of those, and so what we're trying to do is, is provide a basis by which either the employer can justify, I mean, so the, the employer, the prohibition is you cannot have a COVID-19 vaccination mandate, that's the prohibition. But we recognize there may be certain issues with that, where that's just not practical by the employer. We had a discussion just last week, recognizing that nursing homes, hospitals, assisted living centers, home healthcare agencies, other people like that may have reasons where they have to require a COVID-19 mandate. If I'm in home health and I have, and I'm providing in-home health for, for people who are, who, who need that help and who have unfortunately have probably health issues, maybe a lot of them would be, um, aged like me or some of the others in the chamber, um, you know, which, I would admit that seems like, you know, you look at the stuff, once you're 70 or 71, life is over, if you, you know, it looks like it's the end, you have, you have a high comorbidity issue, but they have issue, but you, they have that. So if every one of them, if every one of your cut clients says, I want a COVID vaccine person to come into my house to provide me services, now what do you do if one of your employees who provides services in the home doesn't want a COVID vaccine mandate? I mean, they, they want an exemption from the COVID vac, if you, if you don't have a client that provides that to you, now what do you do? You can't, you can't, you only, so many people can answer the phone, only so many people can do the books. But if, if you need that person to go in the home and you're, and that's not a, in, in fact, it's a condition of the contract with, with a private party that you want that, how do you do that? So, so there's gonna be exceptions where employers don't, can't do a COVID, they, they have to do a COVID vaccine mandate. Or you go to a hospital. We heard, our testimony was that eighty-five percent of nursing home revenues come from either Medicare or Medicaid. Fifty, about fifty percent of hospital revenue comes from Medicare, and another ten percent of hospital revenues come from Medicaid. So we recognize that if that, that is, that become, that is a rec, that is a, an, an obligation for you to have COVID vaccination policy in force in order to qualify to, for reimbursement or payment under Medicare or Medicaid, you're probably gonna have to have COVID vaccination. So now you have to provide an exemption. So, okay, we gotta provide an exemption. How do we do that? How do we provide the exemption? Do we have to follow the EEOC? No, we don't have to follow the EEOC. Uh, we think that, you know, maybe you do, maybe you don't. It's just like we talked a little bit about that last week, um, under OSHA, we said, all right, well, we recognize, you know, the state will look at, will accept that, you know, the state believes or will do the, the enforcement of the vaccine mandate, but we think that our exemptions have as much or more protection than the federal, than the federal OSHA Act requires and the federal order requires. So we're now to go, we're gonna negotiate with that. So you can do that. What our considered opinion was, after taking the testimony from over fifty people, was what's the standard we're gonna do? If we're, and it's not gonna be OC, then what is it gonna be? What is it gonna be? We have to write that standard, or we can simply delegate it to the Department of Work force Services and see what they come up with. We can do that. But in the testimony that we heard from employers from all across the spectrum, not just, not just healthcare providers, was that it makes a lot of sense to do it with, to, to, for us to all, to elect into EEOC, because that's what employers already know, that's what the Department of Workforce knows, and they've already dealt with those issues about when is it, when is a reasonable religious accommodation appropriate, or when is that necessary? They've also looked at medical exemptions, and when you talk about medical exemptions, you're talking about that's in, that's, that falls in then with the, 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 uh, definition of a disability under the ADA. And so everybody's already dealt with that. So you don't have to reinvent the wheel. It was our choice that if we were going to do this and put it in force, that was maybe the right way to go about it, because it provided a standard. Otherwise, what is the standard gonna be? I, we can, we could set that by statute, more likely it'll set by regulation, and I don't know that I'm comfortable with that. I, that, like I say, employers do understand EEOC, and so does the department. So that would be helpful in some regard. Um, but, but, so you get to the standard, that's not, uh, it wasn't because we think the EEOC is, uh, we have to abide by it, but it provides a standard that people know and familiar with. So that was, that was a decision of the committee to go with that. Now, can we, we can change that later, we can change it now, but ultimately, there has to be a standard at which both the exemption, or the, the, when employer feels that it needs or it's vital or important that it have a COVID vaccine mandate, so that's got, they have to have the, they get an exception to, when they get to do that, somebody's gotta figure that out. And when, what's the standard by last judge? And then all these other exemptions, um, for employees not having to have a, comply with the mandate, those exemptions also have to be figured out, and they have to be judged to a standard. So back to the Constitution, the question was, uh, and the two, the two articles cited are, are fairly similar, and they're both making sure that we have the free exercise and enjoyment of religious profession worship without discrimination or preference shall be forever guaranteed in this state. And, uh, and so when you have that, we, we have those. You also have back in, uh, I think it was Article Twenty-One, Section Twenty-Five, perfect, it talks about, uh, perfect coloration of religious sentiment shall be secured and known and have in the state should ever be molested in the personal property on account of his mode of religious worship. So actually, the, the, uh, the religious exception is recognized throughout employment. So for example, you have to have, you know, if, provided that it's, unless there's a very, a, a, a very important reason that they not have it, you get time off to tend to religious services. If you, you know, unless there's something that i- i- about, that just comes, so it's, if you have to, if you need to wear a certain religious garb as a part of your worship, you, you can't, it's hard, very hard for employer to deny you that. So the, 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 uh, and again, if, if, for example, we, you know, we all know that we all, oh, it's easy for us to think of a certain religion that, that doesn't want, you know, that, that don't, doesn't want, and they don't want anything, but, you know, not, they don't want transfu, trans, what do you call it? Transfusions, thank you. I was thinking that was a drink, but, thank you. Uh, the, the, you don't want transfusions or other kind of medical procedures, those types of things, those are, that's part of your religious worship, and those things are religious exemptions, there's no question. But when you come back, some people hold a strongly held religious belief that may not necessarily be a mandate of their religion, but it doesn't mean that you don't hold that religious belief in your heart. And so that's why these exemptions are set up. At the same time, you're trying to recognize the employer's right, that they have to provide a service. They have to do it the way, the way that customers want it, they have to do it in a way that gets paid. And ultimately, if, 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 the, if your religious observances and your beliefs just can't mesh with the, with the, with the business of the employer, and there's not alternative duties, or there's not other things available that they can move you to, then you're, there, there, it just doesn't work sometimes, and we just, we have to recognize that. So if you're a professional fo- football player, and, and you, and your Sabbath Day observance says you can't play football on Sundays, then you don't get to be a professional football player, because that's when they play, with the exception of a few Mondays and Thursdays and Saturdays and whenever they said they play. But, uh, so I, I, I don't know, so I'm trying to address that religious exemption and the religious thing. It's, you have the free exercise of religion, no one can stop you from exercising religion, but if there, if there just can't be a reasonable accommodation made for you to have your religious work and perform the, and it's essential to the work or important to the work that's being done, and it, and it just becomes unworkable, then you're free to practice religion, but you don't, you're not necessarily free to dictate to your employer what your job is. So that's, I, I'm, I'm, I think that's the best way that I can explain it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Bytnan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staying on this religious exemption topic, I think, for the most part, you know, this amendment does some good things, it does some okay things, but this is, to me, the word, the most egregious trampling of religious liberties I, I've seen. This is really bad. It's basically codifying into law what we are seeing being played out across the state and across the country, where religious exemptions are just being flat out denied. Cart blonde, there are no, no questions asked, they're being denied. This is, this is, um, serious stuff, and where this is going in the wrong direction. I think we should be strengthening, not weakening, our religious exemptions. So is this, or is this not just a, a, a basic carve-out to business and to codify into law what some, some of these employers are doing, whether they're public employers or private employers, that are just flat out denying these and saying, catch me if you can, basically, and putting it up, putting the burden on the person who's been violated, to have to go through the cost of an, an attorney and file a claim and sue and, and go through the courts. Um, if, this doesn't seem right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator James.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we were duly elected by the people that we're supposed to protect, and so I'm just curious why leadership decided to put forth these particular bills when we had a good list of bills? And these particular bills that are put forth be- before us do nothing but punish the people.
Senator James, I remind you that we're on the amendment. If you stick with the amendment at this time, thank you.
Okay, this amendment does nothing at all. For this bill. So, um, and that's my question is, why doesn't it? Why, why is this here at all? I mean, it, this amendment, period, it does nothing but hurt the people, period. It doesn't protect them, it doesn't do anything but hurt them. And that's my question. Thank you.
Senator Steinmetz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Folks, this has been a tough special session. We've had a lot of debate on this floor, and these are the vehicles we're left to deal with. So have at it. Make your amendments amend into these bills what you would like to see and the things that you do feel like protect your constituents. This is what we have to work for, uh, with, and the Appropriations Committee was split on a lot of these amendments on both of the bills. And so in answer to the good senator's question, I think that, that, that's what we have to work with. We thought that these bills had big enough titles that a lot of things could be accommodated in this short timeframe that we have to work with, and we've all been talking about that. So have at it. Make your amendments and see what's brought forth, because I welcome the debate from this body. We've all been working very hard on these bills, and thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Kinsky.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, to, uh, address the concerns of my colleague for the North, actually, we could probably shorten up all these debates if Bo and I just got together more often and just talked this stuff through. So that the enforcement mechanisms, what we have is on page seven at the bottom, the department shall enforce the provisions of this section. So here's kind of all the different variations that this, so we're looking to them to put the regulations, we're looking to them to do the enforcement. So there was one iteration of this bill, I can't remember which one it was, and I, I think that came from the other side. And, uh, what they were going to do is give damages to an employee that was wronged, but the employee had to sue. So, well, that's, that's not a real good resolution. So then this bill took an approach of, well, let's stick it into, um, uh, the discrimination claim and let the government handle it there. Well, that's not a real good solution either, because we heard from some of these employers, if, if you're doing any fair contracting and you, you've have, have had a discrimination complaint sustained against you, it's like a death knell. Plus, the damages under discrimination are not just back pay, they basically come in and run your business, and, and not just back pay, but front pay. It's like, well, not only do you get the two years you weren't working, but we think you could have worked there another twenty years, so here's twenty years of front pay. So that wasn't a real workable solution. I worked real hard at thinking, well, let's, let's put it into the UI department, because there, you know, somebody says, I, I can't work Saturdays because of my religion, they fire them, or, you know, they quit because the employer wants to make them work on Saturday, they file for unemployment, say, I was, it was constructive discharge, he wouldn't respect my religious exemption. Well, UI is used to looking at that. The problem is, the UI, um, is largely funded by federal funding. Most of that unemployment money is federal funds, and the department is funded by federal funds. So the feds aren't gonna pay unemployment on our own decision that we are going to put a different sort of, uh, COVID protection in. And the department estimated running it through UI would be about nine million dollars a week. That'd have to, that'd be on us. So what we settled on is, let's have the department, and the department said they can do that, stand up some regulations, so the employers can actually send in, here's my plan, you know, does this meet, does this meet past muster under this law? Or an employee will be able to say, look, I don't think this, this, uh, the way they've got this set up respects me in terms of what I do or do not want. And so that was kind of the best we can come up with. We, we did look at alternatives, I'm completely open to suggestion on it.
Senator Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to, just for information for the body, looked up under the EEOC, what is a reasonable religious accommodation under the EEOCC guidelines? EEOC guidelines? I'll just read some of it to you. Although an employer never has to provide an accommodation that would pose an undue hardship, which is also in this bill, it discharges its duty, its accommodation duty, if it provides a reasonable accommodation, an adjustment offered by an employer is not reas, is not a reasonable accommodation, if it merely lessens rather than eliminates the conflict between religion and work, providing that the eliminating conflict would not impose an undue hardship. And when we talk about undue hardship, we're talking about undue hardships on the employer. If all accommodations limiting such a conflict would impose an undue hardship on an employer, the employer must reasonably accommodate the employee's religious practice to the extent it can without suffering an undue hardship, even though such an accommodation would be partial in nature. To qualify as a reasonable accommodation adjustment also must not discriminate against employee unnecessarily or unnecessarily disadvantage the employee's terms, conditions, or privileges of employment. And so it, it goes, so when you get back, I mean, the things that you're talking about, I don't know how you say them any better than what's in there. I mean, it's gonna be established on a case-by-case basis, you're gonna know what your religious practices are, in some cases it's gonna be very easy, it's gonna be very obvious, in other cases, it's not gonna be so easy or so obvious. And that's why, when you do that, if, at least if you tether it to the EEOC, you've got, you, they, they've been down this road, they've seen this, so has the department. And so they have an idea of what it is when you do it, but it's very broad, it's not narrow. It's saying that they have to make a reasonable accommodation that's not an undue hardship on the employer, and that the reasonable accommodation must not discriminate against the employee or unnecessarily disadvantage the terms, employee's terms, conditions, or privileges of employment. That's a pretty strong protection for an employee. If they exercise a reasonable, if they're exercising a religious belief, you cannot, you can't demote them, you can't pay them less, you can't treat them differently to their employees, except for making the allowance for the reasonable accommodation. And, and then again, again, we get back to it, if it creates an undue hardship on the employee, uh, excuse me, on the employer, then you're not obligated to, and that's, that's the same as it is in this bill. So as we talk about that, um, I don't like the federal government as, as much as anybody in here, but not everything the government, government, federal government does is wrong, just most of the time, but whatever, they don't do, they don't get it wrong all the time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Garu. As soon as I find you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was one other reason, I think, that at least colored my thinking on this, and I think did other members of the committee, that hasn't been mentioned, if you turn to page eleven of the bill. If we pass this bill, and this is what we came down here in this special session to do, at least that's what I was told, I didn't vote for it, but that's what I was told, um, this bill could become law on Friday. And so we needed a mechanism to make sure that we, if come Saturday at my business, my employees start coming up to me and asking for, you know, ti, for, uh, not being able to go have a vaccine because of a religious exemption, that, uh, you know, we need to have a decision, we need to find out. And I'm not wild about the EEOC either, but if we need a decision, if these, if these questions come up all across the state, starting Saturday morning, we need to start having some answers for folks on either side, whether it's an employer who just had ten employees come up and ask a question, or for those ten employees. And not to have them have to file, go get a lawyer and file a lawsuit, or wait for the Supreme Court, maybe they don't know where they are, or maybe they don't have a copy of the Constitution handy, but it was something that they do, it's a, they would call the UI department, they would call the, the employment folks, because that's where they're used to going. So that too weighed in on part of the decision-making that was admittedly far from perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Further discussion, are you ready for the question on the amendment? I sense that you're ready. All those in favor of Senator Perkins' motion to adopt the standing committee amendment one to House Bill One Thousand and One, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That amendment has passed. That amendment has passed committee as a whole, we are on to the bill. Discussion on the bill. Senator Landon.
Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you, and once again, I appreciate any, uh, patience that the appropriations committee might have, uh, for me, as I try to track, really, I, I wanted to go to, uh, to page three and the definition of employer, um, because I've really struggled to track what we did in the amendment and what that might have done to change that language. I have my suspicions as to what we are targeting there. But if you just go home with me to my district, uh, this particular clause, 100 employees that relate to the acceptance of Medicare or Medicaid funding, I believe that's what that says. If that is the target, I believe that in my community, within a couple of miles of where I live, I can count six institutions already that are greatly affected by that language. We have a, a mental health facility, we have a counseling center, we, we have an orthopedic center, we have, uh, we have two hospitals of substantive size in our, in my community. And we also have a rehabilitation hospital, which many of you may have been there with a family member. So I'm just wondering why that arbitrary number is in there and what exactly are we targeting here? I, I'm just, I could really use some help, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And so, uh, so the, uh, so we'll just go back to the amendment, the amendment was not intended to change who in, who, who was an employer under, uh, under that definition. The amendment was only trying to make sure that it covered the folks that, it was just trying to be more expansive than the existing language, which was, has at least one employee and any federal, uh, they used to say, has any other federal contract in the course of the employer's business. And again, what we heard in our testimony was, and if you, if you, and I've read, I've read, I've skimmed the portions of, significant portions of the executive order that, that the governor sued on. And, and, and one of the things that they're, and the exec, excuse me, one of the other executive orders that, one of the executives out there, that they're making this applicable through the procurement statutes. And, and what you're, there's the, there's the federal acquisition, the defense, the defense acquisition regulations, there's the federal acquisition regulations, they've got a whole, they've got regulations on regulations if you do federal, if you do business to federal government. And so under the, the, the president has, has cited authority that, that Congress gave to the executive branch under Title 40, uh, section 140, 104, whatever it was, and says, I've got, you know, that Congress delegated me this authority, and so now I, because I'm doing this as a part of my executive authority delegated to me by Congress. And, and so he's, he's done that, so we're, so we changed, we modified it to make sure that it picked up all the people of federal acquisition regulations, because we talked about anybody who drills on a federal lease, anybody who leases on federal property, anybody who's a concessionaire on federal property, anybody who provides any goods to anybody who does any of those things, are all going to get pulled into these federal acquisition regulations because they impose that on whoever the, whoever the contractor, whoever the concessionaire is, and they've got to impose it all the way down the line, they've got to ensure that. And so what, what one does is it looks out and looks at what's come out in the executive orders, what has been said is likely to come out in any actual regulation or order that comes out, and we're trying to, it, it picks those businesses that are most likely to be subject to a federal mandate, and it tries to pull them in and say, all right, you've got a federal mandate, you can't have a federal mandate unless you justify it, and then if you justify it, you have to provide these exemptions. So the, the point wasn't to carve out people, the point was to include as many businesses as possible that are likely to be subject to a federal mandate. So there's no carve outs that lets people off the hook, this is intended and aimed at anybody who's likely to be subject to a federal mandate. It's expansive and it's expansive, that's how it came to the House, that's, that was the concept behind the bill, it's intended to apply to anybody and everybody that's likely to have a federal mandate.
Senator Raffus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm trying to imagine what this will do in practice, and I, I'm sort of arriving at the point that it either does nothing or it does something bad, and I'm trying to figure out which one of those two things is factually accurate. So I've got maybe some scenario questions that we can play out. When we discussed the idea of an employee or employer mandate, previously, a lot of concerns were raised, and I think they were valid concerns, and one of those concerns is one that I have based on a lot of the work that's done in my district, uh, where we have employers that, uh, have a lot of their revenue based on federal contracts, substantial millions of dollars of revenue each year, as a matter of fact, I would say that, that their, uh, business structure is entirely dependent upon those federal contracts at this point, to the point where they couldn't replace, and that they would be more likely to leave than cut those contracts because they'd want to maintain their employees. So a lot was changed based on the amendment, I think a lot of those changes provided some flexibility, but it's still clear that definitionally, because these are federal contracts, there's no question that this company that I'm referring to qualifies as an employer, certain of that. But now I'm thinking through, federal rules are promulgated that do not necessarily include all of the language that we have here, and I'm trying to imagine a circumstance then where an employee or a group of employees, uh, file for exceptions, apparently through the E E O C process, and want an exemption from what is effectively the federal requirements. Would they potentially get those exceptions, which would then lead to a violation of the contract and potentially a withdrawal of that contract? Or would the business be able to deny even through that E E O C process any consideration because it would be catastrophic to their business? And I, I sort of see conflicting language, Mr. Chairman, I'm not entirely sure how that would play out. So from the employer's standpoint, imagining a contract or how would this actually work in practice? And then a more broad question, uh, for the second question, is there anything in here that's actually beneficial to the employees with certainty? So I want to contemplate the employer's side now from the employees' standpoint, uh, that is definitively going to help those employees. And then the third and final question I have is a lot of the objectives, we saw this with other legislation, is to try to push back against the federal government for their overreach, but we had a long conversation about the state's overreach previously. Is there anything in here that really pushes back, or is this just additional state regulation that effectively pushes down on our businesses and makes it more challenging for them to do what they need to do, which is honestly all I see in here? I don't see anything pushing against the feds, I just see us pushing down on Wyoming businesses. So am I missing anything? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for those three question opportunities.
Anyone from committee like to address those questions? Senator Kinskey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so the first, the first scenario, employee files for an exemption that they're entitled to under Wyoming law but violates a federal regulation. What does the employer do? And so the amendments that we put in there, we think are going to minimize that prospect because there's, there's every indication that, that, that once those regulations are out, that they will probably abide by the same sort of scenario that we've got here in terms of exemptions. So we, we think we may have minimized the opportunity for that. I think if we create one regulatory scenario under Wyoming law that can place these employers in conflict with the federal mandates, and they're the ones in the middle, I, I think this bill becomes untenable. I, I don't think we can do that to our employers, why would we do that to our employers? We don't want to do that. What benefit to the employee? Uh, I think there's a number of employees, and in the case of one really highly visible situation, where, as my colleague to the north said, they're, they're being treated summarily, and, uh, we want to make sure that, that, that we get something on the books that says that's not the way that's going to take place. And then the third is, are we creating more regulations on top of whatever the feds are doing? Potentially yes. And how do we push back on the feds? That, that is the question, how do we push back on, on, on these people that, you know, really think they've got the authority to do about anything that they want? And so I'm not quite sure how to answer that question.
Senator Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chairman, and answer, does it do anything for the employees? And it, I, um, the answer is, it does more than a lot of places are doing. Just reading a headline from, uh, the 29th, the Supreme Court rejected an emergency appeal from healthcare workers in Maine to block a ma, a vaccine mandate that went into effect Friday. It was a, it was a mandate that was put in, in effect with hospitals, it was signed by the governor of Maine, and it went up, and there were no religious exemptions that were provided in the Maine statute. We are providing religious exemptions as well as other exemptions. So, um, there's other states, New York and Rhode Island also have vaccine mandates with no exemptions. So are we doing something for the employees? We're doing a lot more than's going on in some other states. This is a balance, there's a significant tension, um, about employers and employees, and, and both have property rights and liberty interests, employees have property rights in their businesses and liberty interests in their businesses that are protected by the Constitution, employees have rights and liberty interests in their jobs and in other, and, and in other elements of lives that are protected by the Constitution, they're both protected by the Constitution. So how do we, how do we navigate this? What, this is, this is how we're trying to do it, and like, like has been said, uh, before, bring your amendments and do that, but just, I mean, we're, this isn't in a vacuum, there's other places going out there, and they've, and there's places gone out there, and they've cited the shortages of, of workers and shortages of, uh, of healthcare workers as reasons to have the vaccine mandates, as well as cited for reasons to make sure that you don't have vaccine mandates. So again, if you go out there, that's just a direct action, the question, we are providing more opportunities and more recourse for employees than other states are providing. So that's, is it, is it enough? That's for us to decide.
Senator Anderson. Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I want to compliment the appropriations committee on a job that, uh, difficult job to try to make this bill into something that we can all understand and we can all support. I, I for one can't support it. This does not push back on the federal mandate, it continues to make more state regulations for the employee and the employer, which I don't think we need more mandates from the state for the employers. This, this bill is so convoluted and complex for everyone, even in this body to understand, let alone, uh, in the general public, uh, they, they won't get it. So I am voting no, and encourage you to vote no too, thank you.
I thought maybe you didn't want to hear me. All those in favor of Senator Perkins' motion, when the committee of the whole rises to report, did it do so with a favorable recommendation of House Bill 1001? Please say aye. All opposed, say no. A division by standing votes, I believe it, it did not pass, if we can have those in favor, please stand. Those opposed, please stand. The vote is 19 in favor, nine against. House, House Bill 1001 has passed committee of the whole. Mr. Majority Floor Leader. Chairman, I move the committee of the whole rise report. You've heard the motion, what are your vote? Oh, favor, say aye.
Aye.
Quite a lack of enthusiasm. Those opposed, we get the same enthusiasm. That motion passes.
Our one-person team up front will now do the journal committee report.
Mr. President, your committee of the whole, having had under consideration bills on general file, begs leave to report as follows. House Bill 1002 do pass amended, House Bill 1001 do pass amended. Signed Senator Baldwin, Chairman.
Senator Baldwin. Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption of the committee of the whole report. Heard the motion, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed. Mr. Majority Floor Leader, that clears the desk.
Thank you, Mr. President, one more time, amendments need to be in by nine o'clock tomorrow morning to be heard. Mr. President, I move we stand adjourned until 10 a.m. Tuesday, November 2.
Announcements? Announcements? Senator Perkins, and then Senator Cost.
Mr. Mr. President, your appropriations committee will not be meeting at any time in the near future, thank you.
It is popular tonight. Senator Cost.
Somebody left their glasses on my desk, and I figured they might need them sooner or later to read, so.
And we have a lost and found right there. All right, any further announcements? Okay, you've heard the motion, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay, the Senate will stand adjourned until 10 a.m. Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, thank you.